President, Councilor Lozzi absent, Councilor Calucci.
Present.
President, Councilor Seer.
Present.
We have the petition of National Grid for grant of location at 108 Nahan Street to provide requested electrical service upgrade. National Grid?
How you doing?
Good, how are you? What's going on here now?
Brendan Powell, National Grid, Electrical Engineer, 170 Medford Street in Malden. The petition I have for you today is to... this customer at 108 Nahan Street is upgrading their underground electric service. The existing pipe that comes from the sidewalk box into the basement of their building is well over 100 years old, it's made out of wood, so at this point it's essentially disintegrated. We're essentially seeking permission to break and then replace one concrete sidewalk panel and install a three-inch PVC duct from the existing sidewalk box onto the customer's property, bring it up to code, up to standard, and be able to get some larger conductors in there.
You're going to replace it with cement?
That's correct. We'll replace the sidewalk panel to better than or existing... equal to or better than existing condition.
You just said better than.
Whatever the DPW code states that says equal to or better than the existing panel, so.
Approve.
Want to make a motion to approve?
Yes, sir.
Motion made to approve.
Second.
Second?
Second.
He would have been on the house.
Is all in favor?
All in favor?
All aye.
The other one we had over in the island, so my supervisor approved to do the larger area, the end section, the curved section of that, if that's...
Nice, thank you.
Yeah, okay, perfect, thank you.
For the petition of Crown Castle NG East LLC for administrative review of eligible facilities, request to modify transmission equipment at existing base stations within the public rights of way at the following locations in Lynn. Do one at a time?
Yep.
227 Lynnfield Street.
Might as well do them all at the same time.
Okay, 32 Erie Street, 15-19 Garland Street, 16 Pierce Road, Chancery Lane, 35 Groves and Park, 16 Hanover Street, 201 Linwood Street, Tapley Street, 34-38 Porta Vista Street, and 147 Fairmont Street.
Good evening, my name is Edward Perry, I'm an attorney at Brown Rudnick, I'm here representing One Financial Center, Boston, Massachusetts, I'm here representing Crown Castle. So, all 11 installations are all the same. We are... we have an existing antenna on the top of an existing utility pole, we're looking... the height of the pole won't change, the top of the antenna will remain the same. The antenna does get a little bit larger from a dimensional point of view, and I can show you the existing and proposed, and this will be the same for all 11, I'm sorry. I do know we have a couple, that there are some questions on that we may seek to table, two of them, so I'll deal with those once we finish my presentation. So, this just happens to be one of the installations, that's what's existing, if I may. The... there are really two components, the antenna is at the top, it's 48 inches long, this one is about eight inches in diameter, and then we have an equipment shroud which contains the electronic equipment, and it's housed in that cabinet, so you can't actually see the equipment. What we're proposing to do is to replace the antenna with a similar four-foot antenna with a bit larger diameter. The equipment cabinet's the, you know, biggest change, it's two inches longer in this direction, it mounts directly to the pole, it's two inches deeper, and it's 16 inches wider. While it's 16 inches wider, it is attached to the middle, it is attached in the middle to the pole, so it just sticks out around the pole, it's 30 inches in total. So, when you subtract the pole, you get a few inch, or a number of inches on each side. So, what I did was, I have a picture of an existing installation, this is in Boston, this is deployed, and that's the equipment cabinet we'd be using, just for the record, that installation is located at 26 Wilcock Road in Boston. I also brought with me an FCC emissions compliance report, so the committee would be aware, as I noted in my materials, that we do comply with the emission standards promulgated by the FCC. These are very low-power antennas. This is going to be the step-off for a high-speed 4G and eventually 5G. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, there are a lot of federal law implications here, but if the committee asks questions, I'd be happy to answer, or in any particular installation.
I actually have a question. Does it make noise, or does it make a humming noise?
It's electronic equipment inside the shroud, so you'll get, you know, cooling noise from the fans, but it's not significant.
It's not constant.
Only when it's... only when the equipment heats up. So, as the temperature rises, it'll go out, it'll obviously cool.
Yeah, but it keeps on, like, heat buds in the summertime, right?
In the summertime more than not, right.
I had some questions from neighbors in the area.
Sure.
Okay, one question was, does it cause cancer, that was one of the questions.
I'm sorry, what was it?
Does, is it a cancer-causing equipment?
No, so, yep, so the FCC, it does emit radio signals to attach to the phone, so the way that, the way it works is you have your phone, you'll attach, just like any antenna, to the equipment. Because they're closer to the ground, they're very low-power, and the networks themselves, when they design the networks, they want the signal to be... not to go too far out and cause interference with other installations. So, as long as we comply with the FCC standard, I think you'll see in the report, for somebody standing on the ground, it's 2% of the maximum permissible exposure limit established by the FCC. And the report is significant, if you take a look at it, it does, you know, go through the science about how this works, how the technology works, and if you're actually in a building, the signal doesn't penetrate, so the power's even less. So, you could be, as the report will state, you could be standing four feet next to the antenna, at the elevation of the antenna, before you... you have to get closer than four feet to have any issues.
Okay, I just wanted that question answered.
Yep.
Anybody have any other questions, Byron?
I don't have any for them, no.
That is the...
So, I think, I think we were looking, there were two, oh, I'm sorry, there were two installations that there were some additional questions on, one on Chancery Lane.
And Grosvenor Park.
And one on Grosvenor Park.
Would like to take those off the table.
So, what we'll do is, if we could, if we could, you know, I'll deal with those, you know.
Can you get another meeting maybe?
Correct, so we'll extend, you know, the applicable...
We want you to talk to the people that are affected by this.
Yep, I, as I said to the solicitor, we will deal with whatever issues and questions, you know, folks may have, and we'll, you know, request that those be tabled, and we'll extend the, you know, the necessary shot clocks.
Okay. Before we make any kind of a decision, is there anybody here from 227 Lynnfield Street? What about 32 Erie Street? There's a 15 Garland, 16 Pierce Road, 16 Hanover Street, Linwood Street, or Tapley Street?
Linwood.
Porta Vista?
Porta Vista.
Fairmont. Okay, so, I just want to say something, and I'll give you an opportunity. I'm going to ask the chair if we can give you an opportunity to say something. This has been going on for two months, we had 60 days to make a decision whether or not to approve this, or whether or not to deny it, or to table it, which we chose to table it. We were trying to find out more information on it. The attorneys that represent the city have informed us that we have to vote in favor of this, that we have no option. If we don't vote in favor of it, or if we table it, that this company could take us into court. So, we really don't have an option, but we had to come up with an option within 60 days. I don't think that's fair, to be perfectly honest with you. I know there are some concerns, I've heard from some people that are here, some people who want, I'm the city council president, I just don't like having our backs put up against the wall by anybody, at all, ever. I don't like people threatening us for taking us into court, or challenging, or anything like that, and I don't think it's fair to the people that we represent. So, I think I've said my piece. I'm still not sure which way I'm going to vote, knowing what the outcome would be if I voted no, or if I asked to table it. But I want the residents to have, to be able, if any one of them want to have a say, as to what they feel the impact of this is on them, their families, their neighborhood, and their community, and I'll defer us, gentlemen.
Well, if you know, there's equipment up front of my house, I assume that's what it was about, an operator of some sort, like I said, I've ever had an issue, I didn't know, until a moment ago, the gentleman to my left was just speaking with the guys to the noise of fans. Now, I will, he asked, are the fans now on all these equipment, on this counter?
So, inside the shroud, so each of the equipment cabinets have a shroud?
Okay.
So, there's electronic equipment inside, my understanding is there's a fan inside of each of them now?
Now, so we still have, they have that now?
Correct.
And are there, that's going to be upgraded, everything, so fans get upgraded, everything?
No, so the equipment, as I, I maybe didn't do the best job explaining, but the equipment shroud is not, you know, entirely packed with equipment, but there are radios, we call them radios, they're electronic equipments that get plugged into the shroud. So, there's not going to be a significant increase of equipment inside the shroud, but it's probably not full right now either.
Oh, not that, not that's what's going to happen, the noise issue, this gentleman was just, who was just on the other side of the room, and he has, how do I speak, he has an issue with the noise of fans he's been dealing with for years, is this something that may arise, that we're getting with more fan noise coming in that we aren't noticeable, with, I mean, out, around with the neighbors, like, you're right there, I mean, I'm commenting right, or is it, it falls out in front of our house, and it's...
Correct. If I may, is it possible, because I know they have soundproof blankets that they can wrap around these boxes, so that sound doesn't come out of it? Is that a possibility?
The difficulty with a wrap is that these are invented, and that's the whole point of having the shroud, so that you'll conceal the equipment, but the air has to flow through. We can do what we can to minimize it, if you give me your address, I'll, you know, we can look at it, will we replace them?
I haven't, I haven't been, this gentleman has asked me, but I don't, I'm wondering, is this going to be something that all of a sudden, out of the back, I'm saying, hey, we did, and now, I'm listening to, mm, I don't know, but, I mean, go ahead.
It's a fan noise.
Wow, I'm sorry.
It's like the refrigerator, or a computer.
So, my name is Roger, I live at 38 Porta Vista Street, a second-generation owner of the house, I've built a house, lived in it for over 60-something years, with my mom. That equipment has been up there, the whole time that I moved back in, they have, they have the gas away, but, and probably years before that. My mother used to always complain as well. The equipment is at the end of the driveway, I mean, it's right outside the bedroom window, and my next door neighbor, 34, couldn't be in tonight, his window was falling, he wanted to go. So, pitching our computer at home, it has a fan in it, one, it spins to cool the equipment, that's what this stuff's doing, but it's four fans facing the bedroom window. I opened that window there in the day when it was not on, he says, if, you know, when it's hot out, it's spinning today, it's not hot out, there's four fans going, it's raining, those never suck, and it gets worse in July and August when it gets hotter. They spin faster, they cool the equipment faster. So, right outside the window, and, you know, five, we're talking about 5G, there's some, I have issues, so I've been reading about validity of safety with 5G over my house, but I came down and made a request, where this equipment is coming down, they move it up one pole to the corner, the top of the hill, it's not going to bother a soul. So, I've asked where this is coming down, I'm asking to move it up one pole to the top of the hill, because at the top of the hill, her house there on the corner is on Catalina Road, and it's the side of her house, her windows face me, or face out to Catalina, and at the top of the hill, it wouldn't bother a soul, it wouldn't, anyone complaining about fan noise or anything. And I don't think you can wrap this, because it really, it impedes what's going on. Fans spin to cool the equipment, if you wrap it, you're just going to make that stuff inside part. I understand the council's position, because the federal government gave these companies carte blanche through the Communications Act, to do whatever they want. So, there isn't much you can do, I understand that, and I talked to my counselor, Jay Walsh, earlier in the week about it, so, you know, I know what's going on. But I'd like to just see if it's coming down anyway, to move it 50 yards up one pole, so it wouldn't bother anyone anymore.
Is this something we can compromise on certain poles, that if it's outside of someone's bedroom window?
Yeah, I mean, there are, again, the only thing I can tell you is that there are costs involved in doing it, I agree that the equipment has to come down, the antenna will be changed, but we need to bring fire to the other pole, so that's something that, if I can hear all of the issues that are raised, then maybe we can add that.
Or at least place the fans in a different direction.
Well, that's, you know, that might, right, that might be another possibility.
Anybody else want to say anything?
So, we live on Down Street, we've been there about 19 years, and the last four or five years, I noticed this beacon pop up on our telephone pole, and I really didn't pay much mind to it, didn't think much about it, but I'm a very light sleeper, I'm very sensitive to everything, if a mosquito travels across the room, I'll wake up, because I hear it.
Excuse me, sir.
A year or two later, after that was installed, I started getting headaches, popping around my head, and I know this isn't something that you want to hear, but it's a fact. Never before have I ever had headaches that just pop around my head. I went to the doctors, I said, listen, I'm getting some weird headaches. Do I have brain cancer, do I have a tumor, what is it? He goes, well, is it on one side of the head, or, I says, it's just popping around in my head, and he says to me, well, it's more likely not a tumor, because it would be in one location, that pain would be in one location. I said, all right, well, I'm not a hypochondriac, I'm not even somebody that goes to the doctors. And that was just a regular routine physically. But, I hear ringing in my ears. When I'm sleeping at night, and I wake up in the middle of the night, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning, I hear tinnitus, very, it's almost like if you fall and thump your head, and then you hear ringing in your head, and then eventually it subsides. Well, as it's subsiding, and you almost don't hear it anymore, that's what I hear almost every single night when I wake up. This is my wife's house on Down Street, my house is in Verwan. Every time I go to Verwan, it goes away. Every time I come back to Down Street, it comes back again. So, is it coincidence? I don't know, but I decided to delve deeper into it, and I bought a couple radiation meters. One is Alpha Labs RF meter, and the other one is Gigahertz Solutions, made in Germany, magnetic radiation meter. And I walked around my house, and still, I did not even know what that beacon was on the telephone pole. I'm walking around my house thinking that maybe we have some kind of magnetic radiation problem in the house. So, as I'm walking through my house, I realized that our bedroom has the highest magnetic radiation in the entire house. I said, well, that's not good, it's running 250 nanotestla in our bedroom. So, I called the electrician, had him come over, we decided to check into old knob into it, pre-existed, it was pretty much removed, and as we ripped most of it out of our attic, we realized it wasn't really connected in any way, and that wasn't the cause of it. So, I took my meter, walked around the house, went out the front door, and lo and behold, I'm walking in the middle of the street, and the meter is going crazy, pushing 500, 600, and I have it on videotape, pushing 500, 600 nanotestla on my meter. And as I'm walking up and down the street, I noticed that all that radiation's coming from that pole that has that beacon on it, and that's when I realized, you know what, this might be a cell phone beacon. So, that's when I went and started doing some research, I says, you know, honey, I'm not sleeping in that bedroom upstairs. So, we relocated where we sleep to our dining room on the first floor at the backside of the house, so that I can get sleep at night. So, literally, I'm not getting good sleep. Whenever I'm in, at Garland Street, I don't sleep well. But, it's improved somewhat, and for some reason, the levels have come down a little bit. It was at like 600 before nanotestla outside, and it came down to like 300, 400 now. I just don't understand how the FCC can get away with coming up with their ideas of what is health, healthy for our community, when there's an awful lot of peer reviews, there's over 200 scientists across, across the whole globe that have written peer-review articles on how radiation, not just RF radiation, but magnetic radiation is affecting people's health. And I just, I almost find it insane that we're even talking, having a discussion on download speeds of 5G being in the milliseconds, when I'm fine with 4G downloading at, at one second, you know, so it's, I'm perplexed as to how, one day we don't have this thing in front of our house, and the next day we have a beacon in front of our house, it could be devastating to our health maybe, and detrimental to the value of our property, if 5G turns out to be something that's, you know, harming people. And, we literally open up our window, we look out our window, that's what we see, is that beacon right there. And the neighbor has a daycare on Garland Street, she's got children everywhere, and our other neighbor's got kids running around playing basketball right underneath this, this cell beacon. I mean, I think it's, it's detrimental to the children's health, I think it's detrimental to our community, I just, I'm totally against it, and I mean, no disrespect, I'm all for business, pro-business, I just, when something like this gets shut down off roads, and we have no say in the matter, and we don't even, there's not even a consideration as to where the placement of these things ended up, they just showed up, and now we have to live with it. I find that to be the most hardest thing to swallow. If, if, if there was something, if there was like some kind of map that showed locations that were more ideal, I mean, we have, like I said, the daycare center, tons of kids on our street, I mean, why couldn't they have picked an area where there's a lamppost someplace more distant from, you know, like a daycare and children? And, and literally, the homes, if you measure the distance between that beacon and the second floor of these homes, you're only like 20 feet to 50 feet to children's bedrooms, basically. And I just find it, it's incomprehensible that this is, this is what's going on today, so, thank you.
If I could, I'm sorry, if I could, I'll share our report with you, so at least you had what I provided to the council?
Yeah, I've read this report, but I don't find that it's...
The one thing I'd say is that, you know, there's existing equipment there, so it's not that you have to allow it to be placed there. The question becomes, I'm just trying to respond to your comments, it's there, it's established, the FCC takes exclusive jurisdiction over the emissions, and we're modifying the equipment, so it's not so much a matter of choosing where it's going, it was there, so this new federal law that people have made comments about, deal with the modifications of it. So, the antenna's there, the equipment's there, it's modifying it, where, so the decision was already made, this has been approved, now we're allowing it.
You can, I... I think it's really, I think it's really convenient and cute to say that it's pre-existing equipment. I mean, no one notified us, not, I, when I went around door to door and asked all of our neighbors, not one single neighbor said that they were ever notified that these things were going to be installed four to five years ago on lampposts in front of our homes. So, you know, how do we even, how do we even have a discussion as to what is and isn't fair, when from the get-go, the FCC pushed this on residents, did whatever they wanted to do, and literally, no ability to respond to what's, where they're going, and what's going to happen to our lives, our future, our home, our value of our property and health.
With your, with respect to your notice, you know, when you do these granted locations, you do give public notice, I will say that these were approved 10 or 11 years ago, so it's now within the last four or five, you know, we're talking back.
Never got, never got a notice?
This is the first letter that I have ever received, and it contains the infrastructure to the power pole. And I have to add, even though this is modification, there's no details on what that means, that is just so limited with information. Because if your plan is to improve from 4G to 5G, the infrastructure modification, the technology that it's changing, can create a lot of risk, that hasn't been really studied, with all of these scientists, these professionals, that are putting in appeal for, you know, trying to make sure there are more studies that can be validated, to make sure there's no risk. We're talking about children's health, we're talking about male, men, women, that are pregnant, that have potential risk for their new babies that's going to be born. So, I think all of these, I mean, it's too bad that we have no say in this, because it's what we just heard. I mean, I'd like to know, what is the process in, for the community to try to be, you know, to raise more awareness about this potential risk? I think we deserve to have that answer.
So, that's what this process is for, it's public hearing, everyone gets a chance, an opportunity to appear and make their comments. I will say, we can't take a leap to 5G yet, because there hasn't been no approval, there's no standard set yet, the FCC hasn't issued anything, so we have to comply with the FCC requirements, whether it's 2G, 3G, 4G, and 5G. So, before they deploy, they'll have to comply with the FCC standards with respect to the emissions, and this is the process. As I said, unfortunately, from your perspective, we're dealing with a site modification, and, you know, there are federal statutes that are dealing with this, because the goal is to get these deployed. They're going up everywhere, I mean, that's the bottom line.
I have a, I have a question. Now, on these here, for the technicians, where it's safe to be standing, not underneath the pole, now it says here, for people in buildings adjacent to, and at the same general height.
Yep.
So, if the pole is in front of someone's bedroom window, and it's the same height, now are they receiving more of whatever is coming off that pole?
Well, as I said...
So, is it not safe from what you're saying?
So, it is, if you look through the report, you'll see that you can stand within four feet of the antenna. As I said, anything closer than, as long as you're beyond, four feet or beyond, you're below the maximum exposure limits, and the signal gets diminished by buildings. So, if there was one directly outside this building, right behind his head, as long as he's four feet away, according to the report, and the FCC standards, he would, we would not be exceeding the emissions, but because we're in the building, the walls, the windows, the steel, all block the signal to a great extent.
But I know, like, my house is not made of steel, it's wood, and if the pole's like a few feet away, right?
Anything.
An open window screen?
Yeah.
Anything that deflects, especially if it's metal, is not, the signal is not going to penetrate as good, that's why we don't use metal around these things. As I said, you would have to be standing at, you know, three feet, you'd have to hover up next to the antenna, at less than four feet, to be exposed to something. And I know that people are not, if you go to the FCC webpage, you know, unless, unless you're just not going to trust what our government says, if you go to the FCC webpage, you can look at the science, you can understand that there are built-in safety factors. So, as you'll see in the report, even if you got to 100%, the science, the scientists and the FCC have built-in safety factors. I would implore you to read the report, you don't have to take my report, go on thefcc.gov, and there's tons of materials. And it's, you know, just to, so the council understands, so long as we comply, that's our obligation.
Okay, so, I'm going to make a motion, you just, as long as you comply. I'm going to make a motion to approve with stipulation. And the stipulation is that you come back to prove to us that the locations of where all of these antennas are, are the right locations that, for instance, where the gentleman said that you could move, move it up the street to a pole, that there's no house around it, that it's not going to affect anybody or cause any problems, and I get that there's a cost to doing that, but it's our job as councillors to protect the health and the welfare of the public. our job as councilors to protect the health and the welfare of the public. So I'm making a motion to approve, because I'm told I have to, but I'm making a motion with a stipulation that you go back and bring paperwork back to us showing us that those locations that you have picked are the right locations and give us a reason why you can't move it, say, up the street. And then the next meeting is July 11th.
16.
Well...
Uh, 16th.
As I said, we're modifying the locations. So the locations are set. When you move locations...
Yep.
It increases costs?
That's right. That's part of doing business.
Well...
It's the safety of...
I'm making a motion to approve with stipulation, I'm just asking.
I don't know. I, I think the council president's motion is appropriate in light of the testimony that we've heard this evening. It sounds as though there may be accommodations that your company can make to relocate some of these containers at little or no expense. We've also heard in detail from this gentleman from Garland Street, issues that he's having. I think it's more than reasonable what the council president has proposed in terms of a motion. He's not denying you, he's asking you to come in and show that in fact you have considered, not that you've just told us that these are the appropriate locations, but in fact that they're the only locations. And it sounds from the testimony that we've heard this evening, that perhaps are other locations that are more appropriate and could mitigate the issues that these neighbors are having.
Especially Garland Street.
So I think, is that a motion for all 11? Is that what we're...
It's a motion for all 11.
I, I mean, I can't control your...
No.
Conditions, you made a motion.
You may come back with proof that those are the best locations and you may come back that it's not.
Again, the only thing I would say is that we're modifying these particular locations and that's different than a new location, but I said my piece.
Okay, and modifying could mean moving something as well?
Well, I don't, that's not the case, but I, I get your point.
Okay, that's...
You can do it, you can do it, because it's common.
Well...
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is Chancery Lane and Grove Park included in that?
Everything.
Yep. Counsel Walsh absent, Counsel Jacutus.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ozy absent, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. If anyone would like the report, you can certainly come and grab my four extra copies. You're welcome to take them.
Have you taken some?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Other business, yeah, we get them.
Uh, motion, John.
Petition, we have one more.
There's more?
Petition of Comcast to install a new manhole and underground conduit to provide service to 14 State Street. Comcast?
Taking off the table.
Motion to take this off it?
Yes.
Darren, Darren, motion to take it off the table.
Motion to take this off the table, 14 State Street.
Motion to take off the table. What are we doing now?
So we have a request to bring service to number 14 State Street. So we're going to be locating the existing conduit in the street, placing a four-by-four manhole over that conduit, and then excavating to place one four-inch PVC conduit 23 feet plus or minus the number 14 State Street.
Counsel Walsh is here.
Counsel Walsh is here. Yes.
Okay.
A motion, a stipulation, repave 20 to 20.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Motion, John.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
I take that back.
Thank you.
President, Counsel Abson, Counsel Jacutus, President Counsel Seer. Counsel Seer?
Present.
Okay, you want me to read the financials? The first financial transfer, the sum of $3,199.08 from the account of state elections expense to the account of city clerk payroll to fund the election personnel.
Motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Stavitt?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Abson absent, Counsel Jacutus. Abson, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Order that mayor be authorized to execute all necessary documents, agreements, applications and contracts of securing park grant in the amount of $580,000 for the construction and design of improvements to Lynn Commons, including refurbishing the restroom, 25 decorative lights, fountain repair and installation of pavers.
Motion.
Further order that the City of Lynn shall allocate $580,000 in the Community Development Block Grant Funds for Phase 3 of the Lynn Commons Restoration Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Stavitt?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Abson absent, Counsel Jacutus absent, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes.
I have one more.
The resolution?
This was an emergency that was sent up today.
Okay, we have one more. This one? Order that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute the project funding agreement with the Massachusetts School Building Association for affairs to the project at Lynn Vocational Technical Institute.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counsel Net? Yes.
Yes, Counsel Stavitt?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Abson absent, Counsel Jacutus absent, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. And what about the resolution?
That's the same, that goes with the first one.
It doesn't have to be read? No, okay.
Motion for emergency on all the transfers?
Second.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Stavitt?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Abson absent, Counsel Jacutus absent, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion, John.
Second.
Present.
Present, Counsel Hogan?
Present.
Counsel Ozy absent, Counsel Net?
Present.
Present, Counsel Seer?
Present.
Okay, we have new taxi operators, Erica Garcia Gil. Erica Garcia Gil?
Motion to table?
Motion to table.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed.
We have Carlos Gratini, Carlos Gratini.
Second, no show.
Motion to table?
This is the second time.
Second time, make motion to deny?
Motion to deny.
Step by.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed.
Angel Soto? Angel Soto?
Table, no show. What's the wish of the committee?
Motion to deny.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed.
Yuri Suazo Mejia? Yuri Mejia?
Second, table, no show. What's the wish of the committee?
Motion to deny.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
We have new livery operators, Josca Ceneros. Josca?
Sorry.
Ceneros, he's on his way. All right, one more. Alexis Cruz? Okay, come on up.
Alexis. How are you?
Good.
What's the wish of the committee?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed.
Jonathan Mola? Jonathan Mola?
Jonathan?
Sir?
What's the wish of the committee?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thursday, Jonathan. Thursday, 8:30 at the clerk's office. Thank you.
Alexis Mateo?
Alexis is on his way?
Okay. Joshua Perez? Joshua Perez?
What's the wish of the committee?
Motion to table?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
We have a new auto repair license for 10 Heath's Court, Unit 11 and 12, American Truck Repair, Barbara Jean Embrascia. Embrascia?
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's enough.
Okay.
What's your name, sir, for the record? What is your name for the record, please?
Richard Shamberg.
And what's your relationship with Barbara Jean?
My wife.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about both of these together. We have a 10 Heath's Court, Unit 12 for Northeast Oil Delivery also. So I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that we're gonna approve both of the licenses, but we're gonna, we're gonna table Northeast Oil to come back on July 16th. I have to, I'm gonna be speaking with our Lynn Fire Department and I need a little more information just to go with the, the oil part of the, of the license. But their business is now not active, so we want to get them open again because they do have a multiple businesses and they have American Truck Repair also. So we're gonna approve their licenses to get them open and they'll keep the oil truck off the property for now until, until July.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second, yeah.
American Truck is approved?
Okay.
What's the wish of the committee?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed.
Yes, you'll get a notice also. All right. You're welcome.
Did you want, jump down to 10 Heath's Court, Northeast Oil Delivery?
Yes, we just, we just didn't...
Yeah, we can do that.
That's gonna be table to, uh, July 16th.
Okay, was there a second on the table?
Yeah, second on the table.
We have three, Camden Street, Abdell's Auto Repair, Abdell Diaz. Okay, come on up.
Um, what, what's...
It's a new auto repair.
What are your hours going to be?
Eight to five, supposed to be six, but I'm staying to eight to five every day and eight to two on Sundays.
Eight to two and closed on Sundays?
Closed on Sundays, yeah.
Yeah, all right. Eight to five, Monday through Friday, eight to two on Sat-?
Eight to two on Saturdays.
Eight to two on Saturdays, closed on Sundays. That's a stipulation we want to put in on, on his hours. And a motion to approve.
Second.
Stand, stand.
All in favor?
Yep.
Aye.
Closed. Thank you.
Thursday, 8:30. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back to livery operators.
Livery operator, do we have Josca Ceneros?
Yes.
There you are.
What's the wish of the committee?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. 8:30 and Thursday, 1:00 in the clerk's office.
Alexis Mateo? Alexis Mateo?
She's not there.
Is that you, Alexis?
No, this is I.
Josh, Joshua Perez.
Joshua, oh, I'm sorry.
Table Joshua, right? Are you Joshua?
You're Joshua?
Okay, we'll take that off the table. Is there a motion to take it off the table?
Yeah, motion to take it off the table.
Second.
Second. And I got motion to approve.
A second and a two.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is Alexis Mateo here? So Thursday, 8:30.
I know Alexis Mateo is, someone said he was on his way, but do you want to go back to him one more time after or?
We can.
Okay, we have door-to-door sales for 1548 Dorchester Ave, Mass, Unit 201, Royal Marketing Group.
You know that we're not allowed door-to-door right now at this time of month?
Like this time of night, you mean?
At all, right now.
Okay, no, this is why I applied for the tour. I wasn't told anything about, you weren't exactly firm as a whole.
No, we've, for the last two or three years, the council has decided not to allow door-to-door. We've had some issues, some problems. It's not just for the safety of the elderly, but it's also for the safety of the people that are going door-to-door. So there's a lot of requirements, and people aren't familiar with those requirements and aren't going to do it. A lot of promises have been made and broken from...
I understand that. Me personally, I haven't been in this market for the past two or three years, from originally from Canada. So obviously, my business has been different there. I have run into outdoor companies in the state since I've been here and that's why I understand what you're talking about. I'm not sure what kind of promises you guys have made. I do know that we do business properly. Like, I have complaint reports in the past two months for our office specifically. I have examples of uniforms everywhere to make sure people aren't misremembering, understanding where we're from or who we're from. And as far as targeting seniors, that is definitely against rules. We were actually not even allowed to haul into sale, which is... And as far as safety goes for us, we've never actually had an issue on that side of things, but that's generally something that comes and becomes a problem when salespeople are aggressive and people are aggressive backwards.
Well, some of the neighborhoods that they're in, I'm a little nervous about the safety of people who aren't aware of the surroundings. But also, when you say you're not allowed to knock on the door of a senior, there's a cause. You don't know who's living...
Yeah, that, that we're not allowed to knock on the door, we're not allowed to pursue the sale.
Right.
So, so if someone, if it's all against the door, we don't pursue it simply because, number one, that's where a lot of children, the complaints in this industry come from, and number two, religious morals.
So I'm gonna make a motion and deny.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Okay. Motion's denied.
Okay, we're next, we have extended hour renewals, a public hearing, 60 Boston Street, McDonald's. Is someone here from McDonald's? Drive-through, 24th and...
Discussion on this.
McDonald's? I mean, I don't know.
This is Boston Street.
On Boston Street? Okay. Does Wayne have any issues on...
Why is Wayne not there for a long time? Presentation. Can I go check to see where he is? Counsel Ozy?
Is he in the building?
He is. Let me just...
Can I ask a question?
Ask them.
What is your, you have protocols on inside, you know, different responsibilities inside.
It's drive to your own.
Right.
So from 10 o'clock, we close the diner?
Yep.
Till 5:00.
And you have certain protocols at 10 o'clock or before 10 o'clock for your staff to maintain the inside of the business district? Okay. Do you have those same responsibilities outside of the business?
I'm sorry, I can't...
Do you have responsibilities listed for your employees about outside, the maintenance on the outside of the building, trash, litter?
No, they don't, for, during those hours, they don't go outside during those hours for their own safety, but in the morning, they go out and do all that.
Not just Boston Street, but citywide. That's what I hear, is that there are, that there's a concern for safety. Okay, so nobody goes out there, nobody's checking the barrels, nobody's checking the parking lots and it's a concern with safety. But you're applying for extended hours. Okay? And this is where we have a problem with, there's a lot of litter, not just Boston Street, but citywide, where you, there's a concern for your employees, which is valid. Okay? But extend, but the reason we're extending the licenses so that you can stay in business, but you're still not, now you're not maintaining your responsibilities to the outside of your location. Okay, so that's where, as a, as a, as chair, as co-chair of the litigating committee and as a member of the licensing board, I have a problem with the extension of all the hours because of that responsibility that falls on each and every business, not just you, you just have to be first, but all businesses throughout the city that are applying for extended hours, that you don't have any responsibilities for your employees, or your employees don't have any responsibilities outside the door for, during those extended hours. And that responsibility is now falling onto volunteer groups, it's falling onto the DPW, it's falling onto, and, and it's just a quality of life issue for everybody in the city with litter. Okay? It's, 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 it's a taxing situation on our inspection services department, everybody. And it's probably one of the number one complaints that we have in the city is litter. So we need to figure out collectively, as a group, citywide, what we can do to improve that. Okay? And I'm not saying it's you that's littering, but you're not doing anything to assist in that. Okay?
And I think there was a group of businesses on, on Boston Street, so I think we're pitching on weekly leases.
Yeah, but that was before, it's not, that's not required anymore, but you need to do something to, to maintain not just inside. You have responsibilities in the inside, people I'm sure are required to watch the block, empty the barrels before, you know, before they leave. Okay? And that closes down that part of your business at 10 o'clock. But now you have extended... But now you have extended hours, 24 hours a day, and nobody's maintaining the outside.
Do you just mean our parking lot or the whole city?
I'm not saying that, I'm saying the city, you're responsible for your area around your business, just like every other business and every resident. If they leave, if there's a pile of litter up in front of somebody's house, they're responsible for it. Okay, they're ultimately responsible for it, and that's part of what doing business in the city is. So the problem I have, as a co-chair of the litigating committee with Councilor Chakoudas, is that you're telling us that there's no responsibilities outside of your business, but you still wanna operate.
I don't think we're taking responsibility, I think we're more than happy to clean up at 5:00 in the morning and send somebody else to clean.
But do you, that's my question, do you have somebody else that comes in?
We're gonna hear this from all of them. And driving here tonight, go back down Boston Street and look at both sides of Boston Street. The curved side, the sidewalk, the lawn, there's fast food from everybody, there's trash, garbage, it's a disgrace. And I'm upset, I'm pretty ticked off that we go through this every year. And you're coming back for these 24-hour licenses, and yeah, you're out there cleaning your parking lot, and somebody's cleaning it up, you know, daily. It's, the problem persists, and it's really bad, and it's a disgrace to the black market, to this city. And I'm here for constituents, and it's ticking me off because this is a repeated thing. We have you folks in here every year, you tell us you're cleaning your parking lot, but it's still happening all the time. And so I think I agree with Councilor Field, and I don't think Lynn should be given out the 24-hour license at this point. I'm not seeing anything that demonstrates goodwill on the businesses part. Now, there may be individual businesses that are better than others, but I can't, I can't put a finger on who, what, just when you leave here tonight, drive down Boston Street. Do it tonight, and tell me what you see, because I've seen a lot come in here. And it's a variety of fast food, trash, and debris, and it's, and that's a disgrace to the who's doing it, the customers that do it. You know, it's not a case of overflowing barrels, but people are just disrespectful and late night, nobody sees them, they don't care, they just throw it out. During the day, they'd be shamed for doing what they do. But at night, late at night, they have no qualms about just throwing it out, and it's not a good thing for the city of Lynn. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else have a, and I don't mean to just single you guys out here first on the, on the McDonald's and Boston Street. It's citywide, it's a citywide problem, but like you said, you know, most of the businesses, we're gonna call it each one individually to see what their protocol is after the restaurant or... Anybody, the gas stations, anybody that's up for a 24-hour license or extended hours, I wanna know what your policy is outside the doors, you know, before those extended hours. It's a privilege, in my opinion. Does anybody else wanna have a discussion? Councilor Chakoudas? Yeah, absolutely, please.
I just have one thing to say, most of the businesses, I mean McDonald's is a number one, but the rest of all these Boston Street ones are a number five. My concern is, I see them out there, I drive up and down Boston Street every day, they're cleaning their property. They can't send somebody out at 3:00 in the morning to clean the property, that is unsafe. These businesses, I have seen them cleaning. I'm finding, we did this last year, we picked on Boston Street, we have a whole city here.
Absolutely.
So before we start saying all of Boston Street, we need the whole city.
Agreed.
Because this happened last year, and it's not gonna be all Boston Street again. It's not fair. And again, it's the Boston Street businesses that are up here, it's just not fair. We have to look for the whole city, I'm not gonna have all the businesses on there. I'm not saying we picked on, they paid out of their own pockets last year to have the street cleaned. To me, that wasn't right, nobody else in the city did it in their business. So please take consideration of the Boston Street businesses. It's their constituents, it's their customers, literally, not the businesses themselves, remember that.
I agree with Councilor Chakoudas, thank you for that. It is a citywide issue, and again, Boston Street just comes alphabetically first, everybody's gonna be so, what's the wish of the committee on Boston, McDonald's, 60 Boston Street?
Would you like to make a motion to table it till August 13th?
16th, July 16th?
August 16th.
August 13th.
The August meeting.
August 13th, yes.
Okay, I'm gonna second that.
Can I just...
Please, no presents here?
Yes, sir. So we're making a motion to table it till, I guess, 13th meeting, are they gonna be allowed to stay open?
Yes.
Okay, so you guys come back, hopefully...
Do you want something from us as far as participation or ideas?
You know what, just put a sign up in your windows, maybe on billboard, that says help people else any clean. We're all trying to work together, just something like that might help.
We could add additional trash barrels as well. Our protocol is, before we close the lobby, the dining room area, the trash barrels outside are to be changed, so they're empty, they're not overflowing or whatever. But once people drive off the parking lot, it's really very low of the priority, you know, other than make them eat it right there in their hands. But, you know, we're happy to pitch in and do whatever, you know, whatever you guys think would be helpful. I'm good, everything makes sense, we're happy to do that, but we, you know, we really, it's important to us for people to stay open.
All businesses on Boston Street, because it is one of our main business stories. There's a lot of businesses, people drive up and down there, so it reflects on the whole city, I agree with Councilor Chakoudas was saying. But if you take a look back in the 70s, when we had a little problem in America, everybody remembers the Indians standing on the side of the road crying. So, you know, we gotta start somewhere, so maybe this will help.
And we wanna celebrate the businesses that are doing the good job too, because...
Yeah, no, we definitely have a rule in all of our locations, we clean within a block.
Just a question, are these all renewals or for our new proposal?
Renewals.
So new proposals, all renewals?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so all those in favor, table it to August?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. No, we'll have a discussion in the meantime between now and August, see what we can do collectively, considering business.
We're happy to participate.
Thank you.
We have someone here from 65 Boston Street CVS Pharmacy. Is anyone here from CVS Pharmacy?
Is that Alex, Alexis? Alexis Mateo?
You have CVS?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just, I just, you wanna take one afterwards?
Take your wait, it was later.
Yep.
So I wanna go CVS.
CVS, Boston Street, Councilor's here.
Is there anyone here from CVS? No one's here.
Councilor's here.
So the last two years, we've asked and requested businesses to come here, it's always the same ones, Dunkin' Donuts, Burger King, McDonald's. You know, they always come, they always try to do what they can to help out. One of the biggest businesses on that street is CVS, where they have a few other locations in the city. And I gotta tell you, I am fed up with CVS. I don't think we should extend or allow them at any of their stores in the city to stay open past 10 o'clock at night. They don't have respect for the city by the condition of their properties and the way they look. It isn't just about the trash, it's about the shrubs, it's about the weeds, it's about mulch. They have what they call Class A stores, B, C, and D. I don't give any one of the stores even a D. As far as I'm concerned, they're all F's. And again, they show disrespect to the council, and I'm saying, don't even give them the option, just deny it.
What's the wish of the committee?
That's a motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
80 Boston Street, Dunkin' Donuts, 80 Boston Street, Mona?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. President?
His birth example of somebody who does what they're supposed to do. Now, you don't need to talk, because I can tell you, he's been there, he stood up, he's donated money, he's had meetings in his location, he tries to do the best he can. And if any one of his stores in the city, if there's an issue or a problem, you pick up the phone, he answers, and he takes care of it right away. So, I mean, if he's looking for extended hours, it's my opinion, it's not my line, but if some of his stores are in my line, I would say give it to him.
Is there one question?
I got a question.
You got a question for me?
Go ahead. No, you might, you might actually enter.
I close both stores 24 hours. Because I had issues with help, stealing, so I closed the stores. I start opening at 4:00. Over the winter, when we had the snowstorms, if we had to help, I opened it up, so that the plows could come in for parking, whatever. Other than that, I close it, I mean, I can open at 4:00 in the morning, so...
So I would say, give them the option, be able to do what they're doing. So what's before us, I'm not clear yet.
He's applying for extended license to be able to open 24 hours, is my understanding that if you wanna be open, we would approve that you can be, if you don't, you don't have to be.
It's not checked off on the box.
24/7?
24/7, Dunkin' Donuts and Boston Street.
Oh, my glasses, the, the, am I looking at the, 80 Boston Street?
Yeah, when I applied for the license, I told a girl that I was gonna open at 4:00.
Yeah, so that's, I have here before me, what, it's not a 24-hour license?
Well, who wants the option to have it if he wants it, he paid the money.
I wasn't even aware, nobody contacted me, I really like to know about it before then to contemplate and discuss it.
Councilor Chakoudas?
I'm confused by it.
He used to be open 24/7, he's no longer open 24/7, he's... When do you open 24/7?
I open at 4:00 until 11:00 at night.
Yeah, so he closes at 11 o'clock at night, now he opens at 4:00 in the morning. Like you said, during the snowstorm, if he has the staff, he tries to stay open for the plow drivers that are out to get coffee. But other than that, he closes at 11 o'clock in the morning.
Both stores.
I'd like to change this until the next meeting if I could.
I wish you would, on my behalf.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'd listen to a...
There's no second on the motion, is there another motion?
This is, first of all, this is my ward, and this is the license.
This is mine.
I'm taking this next to...
80 Ward 5.
It's mine.
80's the drive, 80's the drive.
That's why I'm standing up here.
I thought that it was the other one.
I know you didn't, or it's come approached me that I'm wrong. This is why I'm up here, and this is why I'm asking for him to be granted this license.
Is there a motion on 80 Ward 5?
I apologize, I want him to...
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Aye, motion passes.
Yeah, 108 Boston Street Burger King, is somebody here for Burger King?
Excuse me, you got 364 Linway, that's also mine, I did the same thing.
Yeah, we're good, yeah, we'll take it.
364 Linway, Dunkin' Donuts, same owner.
Any discussion on the Ward 6, 364 Linway?
Same thing, we wanna celebrate, we wanna celebrate good business instead of doing the right thing.
It was 24, I also closed.
Okay, so the option is still there, is there a motion?
I'm doing the same thing I did on Navy.
Is there a motion for 364 Linway?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're at Burger King?
Burger King, 108 Boston Street, anyone here from Burger King, 108 Boston Street?
Table, motion to table July?
Motion to table.
Motion to table, July 16th.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, 116 Boston Street Wendy's, someone here from Wendy's?
Is there a motion from the committee?
Motion to table.
So the July meeting, is there a second?
There's a second.
July, okay. 122 Boston Street, Boston Shell. 122 Boston Street, Boston Shell.
What's the wish of the committee? Motion to table for July meeting, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, 124 Boston Street Taco Bell, is anyone here from Taco Bell?
What's the wish of the committee?
Motion to table.
Motion to table to July, is there a second? All in favor?
124 Broad Street, George's Roast Beef, is anyone here from George's Roast Beef?
What's the wish of the committee?
Motion to table.
Motion to table to July, is there a second?
Second.
Is that for 24 hours?
No, 2:00 AM, extended hours.
512 Chestnut Street, Lynn Mobile, Lynn Mobile Gas Station, Chestnut Street?
What's the wish of the committee? Table to July, is there a second?
Second.
668 Chestnut Street, Cumberland Farms. Cumberland Farms?
Table to July.
Second.
120 Liberty Street, Speedway, anybody here from Speedway?
What's the wish of the committee?
Table to 16th of July.
Table to 16th of July.
3 Linfield Street, 7-Eleven, anybody here from 7-Eleven?
What's the wish of the committee?
Table to July.
Is there a second?
Second.
377 Limway Wendy's.
Table to July 16th.
Is there a second?
525 Limway Golf, Golf Station?
What's the wish of the committee?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
535 Limway, Limway Shell.
Motion to table.
Second.
567 Limway McDonald's.
Motion to table, second.
Second, all in favor, aye.
16 Market Square, Lynn House of Roast Beef.
Table to July 2nd, um, July 16th.
Second.
17 Market Square, People's Choice.
What's the wish of the committee?
Table, second.
50 Western Ave, 7-Eleven.
Motion to table.
Is there a second?
707 Western Ave, Domino's Pizza. Domino's?
And we have another one in...
Okay, we'll take them together, West Live and Union Street.
We're a little bit different, I think, in that we close the doors.
They're gonna give us free pizza because if they're not, you're gonna...
I just give you these examples, we close the doors in order. In the world of pizza, people order more and more increasingly through social media, so we have delivery. Believe me, my biggest concern, I think, is expressed by my friend John Melvin from Dunkin' Donuts, is the safety of our people too at the time of the day. And so we have a system where if you call in and order a pizza, we have caller ID, and then we call back. We just don't, a driver show up someplace where they might get waylaid. But I talked with Counselor Chakoudas, because Union Street is in downtown areas, many residential areas, you have one on the corner of Federal, which is a busy area. But let me just say this to you, that, I'll give you a couple of examples, good ones and bad ones. The Patriots win, by the time the Super Bowl was over, it was well after midnight, the people were ordering pizza. The Bruins lose because of the time change in St. Louis, and back and forth, people are ordering pizza, generally around related sports events and television events. But it's not that people are coming in, sitting down, eating pizza, it's a different kind of business now. And I think Domino's responsible owner, and I think the times I've been here in the past, I always have inquired, and equally have had no incidents. And as I say, one of the things that's paramount with Domino's is its employees protection. And so we think we have a system that serves the public, serves the people of Lynn, who Pizza Rita's is the council president of it, and also protects our employees, so we would hope that we renew them.
Attorney Vitale, the, both of these locations, these are delivery-only, there's no come...
Right.
Okay, so what's the wish of the committee?
Motion to approve.
Second, all in favor? Thank you.
And we finally have 969 Western Ave, AL Prime Energy.
Table to July 16th.
Second.
Second, all in favor, okay. So the letter's gonna go out to all these that are tabled for the July, that are no-shows today, they better be here at the July meeting, okay, for extended hours.
Would, in that letter, first of all, it should say that if you do not appear, your license will be denied to stay open that late. But CVS, all of their stores should be given that they have 10 o'clock closing time?
10 o'clock?
10 o'clock, was what my motion was. 10 PM.
We'll take the rest as a...
We have actually, do you wanna go back to Alexis?
Yeah, let's go back to Alexis.
Alexis Mateo?
What's the wish of the committee?
Motion to approve.
All in favor? Okay, Alexis, 8:30 Thursday, 1 in the clerk's office, okay? Thank you. Free renewals? We take all these as a whole, what's the wish of the committee? Counselor Hogan, Summer Street? Is that where everything's good? Are we separating that one?
Are they here?
They don't come on renewals, you know, it's just...
Well, the standard stipulations that they have to abide by that they actually weren't, right? We had tires out there.
They had tires out there.
Yeah, had tires out there, did you have anything else on them? Do you have anything else on them?
Pretty much the tires, if you want to table it, you next meeting.
Yeah, we'll table this.
Motion to table, is there a second?
Yep.
Second.
This is P&amp;P?
Yes.
P&amp;P, okay. All those in favor for table? Aye. Opposed? Okay, we're gonna table P&amp;P.
Yep.
Flama Bogan signed licensing, we'll take those as a whole. What's the wish of the committee? Motion approved, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, attorney?
Oh, Chair.
Yes, I'm sorry, Justice Tilly.
Grab one thing, if you wouldn't mind.
Yes, sir.
We went down with the task force the other day.
Yes.
The council was with us for Ward 6. We had one business that was painting cars and doing all kinds of things. The fire department did pull their license and close them. The problem is that they opened up the next day.
Okay, which location is that, is that 10 Heath Court?
No. No. This is on Summer Street.
Okay, so is this under business?
It's on him.
Yep.
Yeah, he actually did come in and renewed his license. He paid, renewed it. Everything was in order for that.
But it's still in violation of a ton of things. Our recommendation from the task force was to be, that it should be, license should be pulled. We have things from the fire department. They basically were painting cars, and told us they're not painting cars. And we picked up the spray gun and say, here's the spray gun, here's the gray paint, here's the car, the door's wet. And he says, that's not paint, that's crime. There's a bunch of cars in the parking lot. I had a meeting with every business in this building. But I know for the length of the night, I apologize for all the councils giving these books. We had a meeting late in my office one day, because we're having so many problems down there, the neighbors are in an uproar. Every business come in, and I told them, they gotta get compliance, you got these cars here, you gotta move them. Other businesses complied, this gentleman didn't. When everybody left, they kind of lingered, and one by one, they came to my office and said, this is the problem for our company. We went out there with the task force again on last Wednesday. Like I said, we ended up closing them down. He was back in there on Thursday, working on cars, but no care about the city. The cars are still outside, they're stacked, which is against the law. We're gonna start issuing a $300 ticket, but I really feel that this is a business that is not operating in the parameters of what is supposed to happen. We towed two cars off the street of his, and a third one across the street, from his business. All this stuff is supposed to be in his fault, it's never in it, we have towed before. He's actually in court right now with another one of my employees for assault case, because the man was towing the car. It's just an unbelievable problem with this gentleman. We went down to his court, and we were having a problem with some cars from another establishment. He met this guy down there, they hugged, and it was this same gentleman, two different properties, all good problems with cars, and they have close relations, which has nothing to do with the other. But I just wish this board would do something.
They were actually in the council office tonight, and we didn't see them on the agenda.
No, because he came in late to renew. And I told him that I would have to speak to you before you go on the agenda.
So his license is pulled, we want, let's table it till July 16th.
Right, it's not even...
It's not on the agenda, so he can't open until July 16th.
Till July 16th, until they come over.
So that's the wish of the committee, that's a motion?
So Joe wanted to send him a letter, tell him that he has to come on July 16th.
All those in favor? Is there a discussion? Yeah, motion in your second.
Roll call.
Counselor Savitt?
Present.
Present. Counselor Lapiya?
Present.
Counselor Calucci? Shapson. Counselor Walsh? Shapson. Counselor Field?
Present.
Counselor Chakoudas?
Present.
Thank you.
Welcome, Counselor.
Thanks for coming. Vice team.
Try to get through this quick. First item on the agenda, discussion with the director of Lynn Cultural Arts District. Do you got any approval of public arts display at the corner of Mount Vernon and Exchange Street? Carolyn Cole is unable to be with us this evening, is asked if this be tabled?
Motion to approve.
Motion to table, second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Second item. Order that the city of Lynn convey to Dee Richard Lemieux and Jean Marie Lemieux of 55 Anchor Road Lynn. Apostle Lynn located at Anchor Road Lynn. Showing Apostle 2 and the abandonment plan appeared, but...
No.
What this is, is to give up a small piece of land divided in half between two abutters as non-buildable. The one to the Lemmews is for the sum of $4,300. Approximately 1,443 square feet. It was an abandoned little driveway-type piece, so...
Motion approved.
Second.
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 Motion been made, seconded. I did speak to Counsel Lozey on this, and he is in favor of it, so... Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Savitt?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapiya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh, Shapson, Counselor Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. In order that the mayor is authorized to execute a deed and all documents required by the law department to effectuate, please, before you move that before I do, I need to... Effectuate the above referenced conveyance. There's also a second lot.
Right, it's on there.
Take that up.
It's on there.
Is there a motion to authorize the mayor to... Second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?[1545.12]